Okay, it's seven o'clock and I think we've... Thanks, everybody, for having a seat. That's great. I know it. It's my first time I've ever used it. Okay. Okay, I'd like to call the April 14th Planning Commission meeting to order. And can I call the roll? Or can we have a roll called, Kate?
Commissioner Schlegenhoffer?
Still here.
Commissioner Stoll?
Here.
Commissioner Victoria?
Here.
Commissioner Laws?
Here.
Vice Chair Dole?
Here.
Chair Espy?
Here.
And Bob LaSalle is absent.
Okay. Okay, so we have a new Planning Commission member and I want to give her a welcome. I want to give a warm welcome to Victoria Meinig. And we're really pleased to have her and I think she's going to really contribute greatly to this body. So if we can have...
Great, yeah, if you want to come on down. And Mayor McGriff is here to swear you in.
So basically, raise your right hand. And you're going to have to read this. Or do you want me to just hold it?
Yeah, would you hold that?
Okay. So raise your right hand and please start.
I'm Victoria Meinig. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States and laws of the State of Oregon along with the Oregon City Municipal Charter and Code? I will respect and support the Planning Commission bylaws, policies, operations, and decisions. I recognize that a commission member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public planning commission meeting. I will faithfully and honorably perform the duties of the office for which I am about to assume.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I hope you enjoy this and that you will have a long tenure and learn a lot. And by the way, have any of you taken your ethics training yet? I took it last two Fridays ago and it was longer than it was supposed to be because we had too many questions for the eye. So anyway, enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any comments or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none? Oh, right, Commissioner Stoll. Second that. Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Schlegenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Meinig?
Aye.
Commissioner Laws?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dole?
Aye.
Chair Espy?
Aye.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is the public comments. And these would be comments that anybody would have in the audience that are unrelated to any of the items that we have on the agenda this evening. Seeing none, we can move to the next item. And we have before us this evening, two public hearings. We have a legislative hearing and then we also have a quasi judicial hearing. The legislative is the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Code Amendments, file number LEG 2502. And for the quasi judicial, we have GLUA 2400020, MAS 2400001, Clackams Community College Master Plan. So without any further, I can go ahead and introduce the legislative hearing. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes, please. Yeah, we'll start with that one.
Okay, so a public hearing on the legislative application is scheduled for tonight and our role is to conduct the public hearing and make decisions about the matter before us. In making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws and cannot vary from or change those laws or codes. Legislative actions involve the adoption or amendment of the city's land use regulations, comprehensive plan maps, inventories, and other policy documents that affect the entire city or large portions of it. Legislative actions which affect the land use shall begin with the public hearing before the Planning Commission. A staff report has been prepared for each application, or one in this case, and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. And the staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. Upon a recommendation of the Planning Commission on a legislative action, the city commission shall hold at least one public hearing on the proposal. Any interested person may provide written or oral testimony on the proposal or prior to the hearing. At the conclusion of the hearing, the city commission may adopt, modify, or reject the legislative proposal, or it may remand the matter back to the Planning Commission for further consideration. If the decision is to adopt at least one or at least some form of the proposal and thereby amend the city's land use regulations, comprehensive plan, official zoning maps, or some component of any of these documents, the city commission decision shall be enacted as an ordinance. Public testimony will be called on the order it was requested. If you wish to testify in person, please fill out a speaker card available on the back of the room. And if you wish to testify virtually, you will be called either from a request to speak email to city staff in advance of this meeting, or by raising your virtual or physical hand if you are here in the audience this evening. When I ask if there are any others in the audience who would like to participate. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and the city of residence. If you'd like to receive a copy of the notice of decision, please state your mailing address or email address. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit a written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for a PowerPoint presentation, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be provided to city staff while the record is open. If they're not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing to continue or present additional evidence and testimony or keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the initial hearing is closed. Okay, so I guess we are ready for the staff report.
Before we start with that, just for the benefit of the audience, we're having some technical problems, so we have physical copies of the presentation. So if you need one or want one, raise your hand and we'll see what... There's some on the back table if you need a copy of the presentation. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Ah, there we go. Great. Good evening, everybody, planning commissioners. I'm Pete Walter, Planning Manager. This evening's hearing is for adoption of code amendments to implement the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Oregon Administrative Rules. This is legislative file LEG 2502. And when I turn my page, you can turn your page. Purpose of tonight's meeting is to summarize the CFAC process, the outreach that was conducted, and the conceptual approach. And Brian Davis, our consultant with Studio Davis, is going to handle the first four slides of the presentation to do that. And then I'm going to provide an overview of the code amendments prior to make to a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Pete, just a second. Are we supposed to make any disclosures on a legislative file? Bias? Nothing?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Not required for legislative proceedings.
Hi, Brian Davis, Studio Davis, 1155 Southwest Morrison Street, Suite 200 in Portland, 97205. So, yeah, so I'm going to try and be as comprehensive as possible since this is our first evidentiary hearing on the topic, although obviously a lot of the things we'll be talking about tonight, we've covered comprehensively in our work session, so I'll try not to be redundant here as we go over this. But of course, we're here to implement some pieces of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Program. This was passed into law by Kate Brown in response to the state's general lack of progress with regard to our climate goals. She directed all of the state agencies to use their rulemaking authority to implement reforms that would help us fast forward our adherence to those climate goals. And under consideration tonight are a piece of those reforms related to parking and administered by the law of, or I'm sorry, the Department of Land Conservation and Development Oregon Administrative Rules 400 through 450 generally. So for about a year now, staff has been, or over a year now, rather, staff has been working to identify the best path forward, including with input from this commission and city commission. There are three basic ways forward that the state's new rules allow. The first one would be to eliminate minimum parking requirements throughout the city. The, this commission, the city commission, indicated fairly early on that their preference was not to do that. So there are two other options that allow you to eliminate parking minimums only within one half mile of any frequent service transit. Key frequent service transit line through Oregon City, of course, is Line 33. And in addition to eliminating minimums within that half mile buffer, you also have to implement a number of other reforms. One of the reasons that we decided this was the best path forward for Oregon City is that several of the key pieces of option three, you're already in compliance with, namely, you would have to implement a paid parking area and/or a permit parking area of some sort, and you already have both of those. So two key reforms there that we can already check the boxes for. So most of the other things that you would have to implement to implement this option are related to development and in particular, related to things that you have to either waive requirements for on a land use basis, or things that you can reduce, or things that you're required to reduce the parking requirement for if, you know, if they're meeting certain other climate friendly development pieces such as lead certification or those sorts of considerations. So that is all, that all was summarized in the conceptual report that we talked about last time I was before you for work session last month. Over that time, we turned that into actual code recommendations. And we chopped this, of course, in front of, in front of this commission twice, as well as the various standing commissions, the Development Stakeholders Group, Citizen Involvement Committee, Natural Resources Committee, the Library Board, and three meetings of an ad hoc committee that we formed specifically to inform these efforts. Again, a lot of it is fairly prescriptive here, but there is some wiggle room that we discussed in previous work sessions, as well as these other outreach opportunities specifically related to landscaping requirements and some alternatives to landscaping requirements such as the ability to do solar power in lieu of landscaping at a, yeah, power generation capacity proportional to the size of the lot, essentially. So you offered feedback on that in previous work sessions, as did several other committees. We tried to incorporate that into our findings, which is the conceptual report, and into the actual code revisions that Pete put together as faithfully as we can. And the, yeah, the other thing to bring up that we talked about a lot at the last work session, as well as the previous, the ad hoc committees and other previous outreach events, there was a lot of interest in electric vehicle charging and how those rules are structured. There was significant interest from this commission in particular in making sure the power grid is adequate to support the charging stations that were requiring to be put in. There was interest in this committee, in, or among this commission, in making sure that we have some good definitions for level two charging, for what charging stations are, for what conduit means, all those sorts of things. So we hope that those are adequately addressed in the code recommendations we're putting before you. And I think there's, maybe Pete is planning to talk about some of this as well, but in particular, there has been a lot of work since last time we talked in terms of identifying what the half mile buffer looks like around transit. You are, the first one we drew up that you saw at the previous work sessions uses a straight line distance from the corridor. We confirmed DLCD does require you to use the corridor and not the bus stops for developing that half mile distance, but you are permitted to use the walk shed. So I'm not exactly sure where that is in the process. I think it's the GIS people are kind of figuring out how to do that because there's a lot of, especially when you consider the topography, this is obviously a very hilly city. And there's, I think, a lot of nuance and complexity in terms of how you matter, how you model the topography and the walking distance there. So, so, yeah, that's, I think, my piece. I'll turn it over to Pete to talk about the specifics of the code reforms.
Thanks, Brian. Also wanted to mention that, you know, we did get feedback from the Planning Commission as we were going through the process to look at incentives to encourage developers to either provide more charging capacity than required or set aside land for future charging purposes. To the extent that we can do that, we've tried to, but there are some limitations on that just because of the nature of the CFAC requirements to minimize parking. There was clear direction to not allow a fee in lieu option for tree, instead of tree planting. And also to prioritize native tree species to the extent that they were, could be the right tree in the right place. And to that extent, staff is going to be working with the Natural Resources Committee on an updated parking lot, tree, and landscaping list over the next year. So we'll be talking through that with the NRC. And then to define level two electrical vehicle charging stations, and we have adopted a definition that defines a 240 volt circuit for that. And now I will briefly go into summaries of the individual chapters. The first chapter that's going to be important to amend is the definitions section. So we have new definitions for all of the bulleted items that are listed there, from change of use to mixed use development, new parking lot, the Oregon City Regional Center, the Oregon Residential Reach Code, what are small scale mobility devices, what is surface parking, and what is underused parking? And we have revised a definition for institutional development and existing development definition. Throughout each of the individual zoning district chapters, wherever the term residential care facilities was used, this is not a CFAC code requirement, but it is a more of a cleanup item. That phrase was changed to residential facilities to be consistent with not only the ORS, the revised statutes, but our existing definition in 1704-1025. And that changes throughout the code in chapters for low density residential, medium density residential, high density residential, the mixed use corridor, the mixed use downtown zone, and the Willamette Falls District, as well as the conditional use section of code. So that's basically just a consistency change. And then we're into the actual chapter that deals with off-street parking and loading. That's chapter 1752. And it seems like we've got the presentation up and working, so that's great. If you follow along on the screen as well. We added a new purpose statement that's not required for CFAC compliance, but we never had a purpose statement for the off-street parking code. We only had an applicability section. So we added that purpose statement to clarify what the intent of that chapter is and kept the applicability section. The applicability section in 1752-010 has been expanded to specifically exempt all kinds of residential uses, including triplexes and fourplexes, just for clarity. And that is to implement OAR 0425 section. Probably the main section that we made changes to is section 020, number of automobile spaces. So there is a expanded list of exempt uses added there. There is a added requirement that parking areas may not exceed the floor area for buildings that are over 65,000 square feet, and that is a specific CFAC requirement. It clarifies the shared parking allowance, which we already have in the code. And throughout the code, CFAC requires that we clean up and remove language that refers to minimum and required parking. So whenever we saw language like that, we would keep any language that dealt with parking design or dimensions or landscaping, those sorts of things, but just with respect to minimum parking, that language was removed. We wrote a specific provision that allows driveways that are at least 20 feet deep on a property, which would be a typical residential driveway, to count towards parking. And that could affect housing developments that are five units or more that actually have 20-foot, you know, driveways, they could count them and that sort of thing where applicable. And previously, we had a provision for, you can share parking for uses within 1,000 feet of the parking lot. And CFAC requires that distance be increased to 2,000 feet of pedestrian travel. So that's a specific change. And then there are accessibility requirements for off-site parking that prioritize that, you know, it be, there be a direct, the ADA access to a building be as close to that off-site parking as it can be. So. Next section we changed is 1752-020C to specify that any reductions in the number of minimum spaces are cumulative and not capped. This specifies reductions for the use of solar wind, solar and wind power, car sharing, electric vehicle charging, and accessible residential uses. That is implementing OAR 0430. In that section, under 025C, we have a new piece of code to recognize reuse and redevelopment of underused parking. So we already allow changes to parking, existing parking lots to modify landscaping, restripe parking lots, do maintenance on parking lots, provided that you don't have an increase in parking. So we're tweaking that language a little bit to make sure that we are in compliance with OAR 0405 and 04052. And we have to adopt a definition for underused parking. And the one that is suggested is, underused parking is parking lots or facilities that are below 50% of the capacity most or all of the time. Section 1752-030, standards for automobile parking subsection E, carpool and vanpool parking. The threshold for requiring preferential location of carpool and vanpool parking has been lowered from 75 to 50 spaces. And also, that is applicable to specific uses which are now listed. Government offices, group homes, nursing and retirement homes, schools, designated employee parking areas, transit park and ride facilities. So our code mostly met or exceeded those from the OAR, except for that lower threshold of 50 spaces. Subsection 040 is the bicycle parking standards within this Chapter 1752. The main requirement here is that we increase bicycle parking spaces for multifamily, which is five units or more on a parcel, and mixed-use development, which has five or more units on it or in it, to one space per two units. We must require lighting of those spaces, so we're making cross-references to our outdoor lighting requirements. And we have to require sufficiently large spaces to accommodate large family and cargo bikes. And a standard bicycle space is now defined as two-foot by three, by six-foot, and a cargo bike space as three-foot by six-foot. Along with that is a requirement for covered bicycle parking, which we already had in the code. So we've made some clarifications in that table that specifies bicycle parking. Then we get into parking lot landscaping, which is a big part of CFAC. The main requirement is that new parking lots that are half an acre or more in size must add 40% tree canopy at maturity. And the alternative to adding that requirement is to allow solar panels in lieu of trees at a capacity of point-five kilowatts per space. Per public engagement direction, the decision was not to allow the fee in lieu of planting in order to prioritize tree canopy. And this requirement also specifies that along drive aisles within a parking lot, there be a 30% minimum tree canopy. So for most new parking lots that are meeting the 40%, they're going to be meeting the 30% anyway, but it's just making it rather explicit. Subsection 070 is a new section for electrical vehicle charging. This is also required in the building code, but requires that a minimum of 20% of the spaces of new parking lots for non-residential and mixed-use with five or fewer units be EV-ready or able to have the conduit or service available to install EV charging. And for multifamily and mixed-use with five or more units, that requirement is 40% of the spaces. And that takes care of Chapter 1752 requirements, off-street parking and loading. We did make some small changes in Chapter 1762, which is our site plan and design review chapter. We have a Type 1 minor site plan and design review process. And we're clarifying under sub-O of that section, which involves, allows a Type 1 process for removal of or relocation of vehicle parking stalls to accommodate tree planting, landscaping, stormwater facilities, solar and wind power equipment, outdoor seating, parking for bicycles, scooters, and other small-scale mobility devices, pedestrian improvements, and similar purposes. So our Type 1 process is efficient, is over the counter, it is objective and clear, and does provide a significantly shortened and abbreviated review timeline, which is an incentive. Under the general standards section of site plan and design review, we had a standard in there that allowed pedestrian circulation areas within or which cross drive aisles to be striped, textured, or have a raised height. And with this revision, the allowance for striping was removed because it's not as effective, and we kept the requirement to have a raised surface or change in texture or height at drive aisle crossings. And so that's just making things a little bit clearer and should make the design of those crossings safer and alert drivers within parking lots that there is clearly a pedestrian crossing in that area. Also, we're requiring illumination of pedestrian paths to the same level as the parking lot. So that's going to be a cross-reference to our outdoor lighting code. And then final sections that are being tweaked include the mobile food units or the food carts section. We cleaned up language referring to minimum and required parking where needed. In the outdoor lighting code section, we're adding that lighting requirement for bicycle parking areas. And as I mentioned previously, we're revising residential care facilities to residential facilities. And that's the summary of the code overview changes. The one item that we wanted to talk through with the Planning Commission with respect to the frequent transit corridor and the regional center. So the requirements for CFAC apply within a half-mile of the frequent transit corridor, which is Bus Line 33, Brian mentioned. And we have mapped that corridor in two ways. We mapped it as a straight-line method, which is indicated by the orange bubble on this map. And then we also asked the GIS staff to do a walk shed method of measurement based on distance from bus stops along Route 33. And due to topography and block layout and where sidewalks actually exist, came up with a very different composite diagram. And CFAC allows cities to measure this distance either in the straight-line method or via the walk shed. And there are some advantages to doing it via the walk shed method, except for you have to evaluate it each time a new application comes in. So the way that we would implement this map is, as with many layers on our GIS, we add it to our GIS so that when we're focusing in on a particular parcel and doing a review, we can see where the walk shed lies in relation to that particular parcel, wherever the development is proposed. So I think it's something that we can fairly easily implement using our existing GIS tools. And if we do use this method, next slide, please, there are several zones with uses that we could require minimum parking within. And that was suggested as a method to potentially mitigate for topography and which could present additional challenges to pedestrians. So we're requesting your direction on which method you would prefer that we use. And the graphic there indicates some of the zoning within the area that's the difference between the walk shed method and the half-mile corridor. Quillen, do you have anything to add to that one?
I think you covered it fairly well. It was really in kind of reaction to that transit corridor and how wide it is. So we are able to, the OAR gives us the ability to measure it in two different ways. So we just wanted to present this as an option to you because we have been, for the past, however long we've been talking about this, we've only been using the straight-line method. So we wanted to explain a little bit the differences there and what that looks like. I don't think, I didn't find anything in the OARs that allowed us to take into account actual, like, slopes and how they change. It just really allows you to look at walking distance. So there still may be, like, some steep areas to climb. And then just, I guess, a little bit of technical details. We did this as kind of an example for us to get a sense of what the difference would be between the walking distance and the straight-line distance. And the only way that our GIS team could do that was to pick a point and kind of model around that point. And so it seemed reasonable to us that they would use the bus stops along that line. Bus stops are not completely acceptable to DLCD because they can change their location. So we need to do, if this is the route that you all want to go, if this is the direction you give us, then we'll need to do a little bit of work between our GIS staff and DLCD GIS staff, just to get them on the same page of how they're actually going to model it. But I think it would look pretty similar to what you're seeing now. It's going to probably be a little bit more true to what it actually takes to walk a half-mile to get to a bus stop. So I think that's, I think that's all I had to say on that.
I was just going to add that, you know, I've been talking about the frequent transit corridor and the one, the half-mile walking distance, but we're also required to not, to comply with CFAC within one-quarter mile walking distance of the Oregon City Regional Center, which is the area zoned mixed-use downtown. And it extends from the 205-213 interchange, Clear South, to the Mill Site, essentially. So there's a buffer around that as well, and we can measure that in the same way. Yes?
I'm seeing on the map that some of the green is over in West Lynn. I just want to make sure that there's no West Lynn bus line that we'd have to consider.
Good question. I don't believe so. I think we're focused on the...
Did we look? Did we check into that?
I don't, I don't...
Are there any buses over on the other side of the river?
That's a really good question. I think we need to follow up and...
Okay.
Confirm that, yeah.
I think there is one that goes down Highway 43.
It's the overlap of 43, which demonstrates the walk shed versus...
Yeah. If there's a stop within a half-mile of walking from Oregon City, I think it would affect us, wouldn't it? I don't know if, does TriMet know borders?
I think we just have to go back and look at the OAR. I was trying to look at that right now to see if it was more specific.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be done now. It just popped into my head, thought it was worth mentioning.
The other thing, just to point out, we don't have to adopt a map, but we can either adopt the language, which is what we're proposing on the next slide, where we would add the OAR reference and the language walking distance to each of those sections in 1753-020.
Did you want to stop and poll the commissioners on whether or not you wanted to do the straight-line versus walking, or do you want to wait until you're finished?
Sure.
Okay. So I can just go ahead and start off and say that I think that the walking distance would probably be preferable. Getting a nodding of heads?
Okay, thank you.
The more we can do to make these rules less applicable, the better. In full disclosure, that decision does take my house out of that development area. So there's that too.
I see what the grand plan is now here.
It's more idealistic than practical.
Just a quick reminder, Commissioner Laws is joining us virtually. So Commissioner Laws, do you have anything to add about the walking distance or straight-line distance?
The amount of impact would be better and have this obviously be a gradual implementation.
Great, thank you. Were you all able to hear her?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you. So your options for making a recommendation are, option one, recommend approval of the proposed CFAC code amendments to the City Commission with a recommendation to use the walking distance measurement for the half-mile transit corridor. And option two, recommend approval with modifications to the proposed code and a recommendation to use the walking distance measurement. Or three, request revisions and modifications and continue the public hearing to a date certain. Would anybody like to make a motion? Are we ready for that?
I guess I would just pause for a minute, just because it is a public hearing, so that's the staff's presentation.
Yes.
I don't know if you want to open it up for any public comment or any other comments.
I don't have any, I don't have any speakers clips for a public comment, but let's, yeah, let's open it up for deliberation.
I'm just going to make an assumption that everyone in the audience is actually here for the next item, so, okay, all right.
That's kind of what I thought, yeah. Commissioner Stoll?
Looking at the TriMet line, it doesn't appear that any of the, based on their map and their legend, it doesn't appear that any of the bus lines in West Lynn qualify as frequent service.
Oh, nice, okay.
Right now.
Anyone else?
I'd like to move to recommend approval with modifications to the proposed CFAC code amendments to the City Commission and a recommendation to use the walking distance measurement for the half-mile transit corridor.
Nope. Think she had her mic on, she got it.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Laws seconded it, and also Derek Sloganhofer.
Commissioner Sloganhofer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Mining?
Aye.
Commissioner Laws?
Aye.
Vice Sherdol?
Aye.
Chair Espy?
Aye.
Thank you all for going through all of those amendments and the multiple meetings and discussing it and giving us your feedback, so it was very helpful, so thank you all.
Thank you for bringing that all together. I know that's, that's kind of a, has a chore with that one. Now, do the commissioners want to go right through with the next item, or do you guys want to take a break? Okay. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a quasi-judicial hearing with the Clackamas Community College Master Plan, 2024 through 44. And I will go ahead and read the quasi-judicial hearing procedure. Public hearings on land use applications are scheduled for tonight, and our role is to conduct the public hearing to make decisions about the matter before us. In making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws and not vary from or change those laws or codes. A staff report has been prepared for this application and has been made available to the public seven days in advance of the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria that are contained in the staff report. The hearing procedure this Planning Commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the Planning Commission website. Public testimony will be called on in the order it was requested. If you wish to testify in person, please fill out a speaker card available... If you wish to testify in person, please fill out a speaker card available in the back of the room. If you wish to testify virtually, you will be called either from a request to speak email to city staff in advance of this meeting, or by raising your virtual or physical hand, if you are in the audience, of course. And I will ask of, if there are others in the audience who would like to participate. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and the city of residence. If you would like to receive a copy of the notice of decision, please state your mailing address or email address so that one can be sent to you. Testimony in evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria, and if you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, reports, pictures, or other exhibits that are used in oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to city staff while the record is open. If they're not given to city staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing to, any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to the new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the, before the public testimony portion of the, of the initial public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes the decision in which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised before the planning commission in order to be considered by the city commission and in the event of further appeal to the land use board of appeals. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient detail and accompanied by statements or evidence allowing the city and all parties to respond, the issue will not be considered on appeal. In addition to participating orally or in writing, raising the issues during the planning commission proceeding, filing of appeals must include the required fee. A city recognized neighborhood association may request a waiver of appeal fee subject to the requirements set forth in the code. In addition, the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of the approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. And now I will go through and ask if there are any biases, if you've visited the site, if you've had any conflict of interest or bias on this particular application. Start with Commissioner Sloganhofer?
No conflicts of interest, no bias. I've, I've taken classes at the Clackamas Community College. I ran countless miles on their, the big loop, not on the running track. So I know the area well, I, I enjoy it. It's not going to affect my ability to make a decision on it. And no ex parte contact.
Oh yeah, no conflicts or bias. I am familiar with the site, I've been on campus many times. But again, no bias or conflict.
I as well. My wife and I are frequent flyers at the, at the college plays and other types of events there. I have no conflicts or bias.
No conflicts, no bias, no ex parte contact. I have never been to the college because I went somewhere else.
No conflict, no bias, no ex parte. I too know that facility well.
Excellent. Okay, so, I'm sorry? Oh, Commissioner Laws, I am sorry. Excellent. Okay, so now we can open the record for.
Oh, one last thing.
I'm sorry?
Does anybody want to question the commissioners on their statements?
Oh, right. Does anybody want to challenge any of the statements that the commissioners have made this evening? Hearing none. We will go ahead and open the record for, for file, for the Clackamas Community Master Plan. And you guys know what the file number is. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you Chair Espy and planning commissioners. My name is Jude Tadeus, I'm assistant planner here at the city of Oregon City.
Welcome.
And I'm pleased to introduce to you the staff report for the Clackamas Community College Master Plan 2024 through 44. So what are we doing here? Well, the Clackamas Community College Master Plan is a general development plan that achieves three main objectives. It establishes a 20-year horizon from 2024 to 44, 2024 being their application date, August 1st, in which the future phases of anticipated development will be reviewed. It also locks in that August 1st, 2024 date for the date that, the code in effect as of that date is the code that will apply to the review of future development as, as permitted in, in the master plan code in, in chapter 1765. It also requests that future accessory structures up to 3,000 square feet that don't involve offsite impacts be reviewed through a type one master plan amendment process. Chapter 1765-08-OD typically permits accessory structures no larger than 1,500 square feet to be reviewed through a type one master plan amendment process. Planning staff have conditioned the approval of this aspect in the recommended conditions on requiring structures between 1,500 and 3,000 square feet to comply with site plan and design review criteria, to include a public utility impact assessment and transportation analysis letter for the city to determine if any offsite impacts will result from structure projects of that size, include a cumulative utility traffic impact assessment for all such structures constructed in the previous five-year period, and to undergo a type two or type three master plan amendment process if such structures are determined to generate offsite impacts. Part of the purpose for this was because that 1,500 square foot threshold, we're essentially doubling it, and there's this philosophy of it never hurts to double check these particular aspects. For, specifically for things like, in our stormwater code, projects that increase impervious surface area by 5,000 square feet over a certain timeline requires an additional stormwater assessment and that sort of thing. So 2,000, 3,000 square foot accessory structures would get us there in that, in that timeline. And so we're wanting to be able to kind of capture that, even if it's, even if a higher level of assessment isn't strictly necessary, we, we want the community college to sort of speak to those, those structures potential to create offsite impacts like trip generation, utility demand, that sort of thing. We go to slide three, please. The previous concept plan expired with all the conditions met, so none of the previous concept plan conditions carried over into this staff report. The applicant is requesting no adjustment to the Oregon City Municipal Code at this time, except for that 1,500 to 3,000 square foot type one master plan amendment process. Make, adjustments may come with future type three detailed development plan applications for the specific development phases. And they're proposing approximately 106,000 square feet of new building area in two phases. Phase one being for the Natural Resource Center of Excellence, roughly 50% of the proposed additional floor area located somewhat, somewhat in the sort of northwestern, sorry, northeastern corner near Beaver Creek Road. And the area around Douglas Loop Road would be connecting the Oregon City Loop Trail to Beaver Creek Road and Marjory Lane where a multifamily development is located. Part of the area in question for this phase one development proposal, or for the phase, for the proposed phase one, is partially impacted by the Natural Resource Overlay District, including part of Douglas Loop Road that the applicant has identified will receive some improvements. It includes improvements to the athletic fields and pedestrian amenities. It's been funded by the bond passed by the voters of Clackamas County this last November. And, and phase one will be reviewed through a subsequent type three detailed development plan application if adjustments are requested. Otherwise, it may meet a lower level of review. Phase two is the Wacheno Welcome Center, which is good for, for roughly the other half of the proposed floor area, to be located in the western section of campus, including staff offices, student clubs, a multicultural center, meeting rooms, kitchen dining areas, additional amenities as well, like a dining hall, connections to outdoor facilities, conference spaces, et cetera. Would likely require an additional bond measure in eight to 10 years, according to the applicant's submittal. And if, if the Wacheno Welcome Center, if the applicant requests adjustments from code that aspect, that phase would be reviewed through a type three detailed development plan as well. We go to the next slide, please. So this is the general project list table provided by the applicant and included in the staff report, the anticipated list of projects that are covered by this general development plan. Slide, next slide, please. So there's some items to consider. The applicant maintains that even with the addition of 106,000 square feet of primary use floor area, offsite impacts are likely to be minimal or non-existent because enrollment at Clackamas Community College is down roughly a third since 2019, and distance learning and hybrid classes have reduced trip generation for those who were enrolled, based on previous estimates in the current buildout. The applicant has explained that even with the expected building additions, trip generation and utility impacts will not be, likely not be significant enough to exceed the system capacities of the current buildout. The applicant is not requesting any adjustments from the municipal code at this time. However, as I said before, future development phases require adjustments from code, they shall be reviewed through type three processes. The next slide, please. Actually, I'm going to go through these next ones fairly quickly because they're the, they're from the drawing set from the applicant's submittal, kind of giving a rough overview of, of the plans. Slide six through 12 provide different maps, but I did want to call attention on slide eight to Douglas Loop Road and the campus services buildings. Just to note that they're located in and near the Natural Resource Overlay District buffer zone that's been identified on the map on slide eight. And so ground disturbance in these areas, if, if proposed, will require review under our, our Natural Resource Overlay District code in chapter 1749. The next slide, slide nine, is to note that the, the applicant has graciously proposed pedestrian improvements to the private Douglas Loop Road and its connections to.
I'm sorry, the slides aren't showing and they're not numbered on the, in the packet that we have.
So you're looking right now at the site circulation plan. I'm, I'm not sure why the slides aren't showing up. I'm sorry about that.
So the, the figures are numbered down in the lower left corners, which, which site circulation plan is?
I think it's probably.
So it's site circulation plan is what I've moved on to. The previous one was zoning and overlays.
Okay.
So just to go back to page, I think it would be page eight here, the zoning and overlays, in the sort of upper right-hand corner of the map, you can see kind of a general area that the Natural Resource Overlay District impacts there. There are proposed improvements to, to those areas on site.
Oh, I see. The dotted line is the N rod.
Yeah, that's the N rod. Douglas Loop Road is, intersects that area as well. So any, you know, any development or ground disturbance in those areas would trigger natural resource review, but would be handled in a detailed development plan to come later. For the next page on the handout, the site circulation plan, just wanted to note that the applicant has graciously proposed pedestrian improvements to the private Douglas Loop Road and its connection to private Innskeep Drive and Claremont Drive and Claremont's connection to Beaver Creek Road. These sections are located nearest to the phase one developments, and improvements will be required in order to complete the section of the Oregon Loop Trail and the Trail's master plan. I would, the next sections you can kind of look through are the sanitary sewer and stormwater plans, the water utility plans. There, there isn't much that I can add beyond what's in the staff report and what the Public Works Department is sort of the determinations they have made there. So I wanted to turn your attention to the general development plan approval criteria on page 13 and 14. These are the code criteria in the master plan code in chapter 1765. So these are the, these are the criteria on which, the, under which the, the general development plan was evaluated. And their applicable approval criteria, planning and development services staff have concluded that this application can meet these criteria through the recommended conditions of approval in the staff report. And the revised conditions of approval, once the staff report was published in the planning commission agenda a week ago, the, the applicant's representative, Ben Schoenberger, reached out to development services and planning staff and for clarification on a couple of items. So we're recommending revised conditions of approval for conditions nine and 10 in the staff report. And they're listed there on the second to last page of your packet. The revisions to condition nine are to call out the specific tax lots, to correct the specific tax lots that were enumerated in the staff report as not being within the GDP and identifying other tax lots that actually aren't in the GDP. So tax lot 32E09A1400 is part of the original applicant's submittal and is covered by this general development plan. The additional tax lots listed above were recently purchased by Clackamas Community College and in fact were referred to by Ann Griffin in the work session earlier and are not included in this GDP. So, so the reason that we're revising this condition is because of clarification on which tax lots are included and which ones are not. We wanted to include the ones that the applicant submitted for and we didn't, we wanted to clarify the ones that would trigger a new master plan process if development were located there. For condition 10, this, the applicant requested additional specificity and clarity on the requirements surrounding Americans with Disabilities Act compliance for the trail loop and the frontage improvements along Beaver Creek Road. So we've recommended the condition, conditions of approval be revised for these aspects in the interests of greater clarity and specificity. Let's see here. So staff recommends that these conditions be revised accordingly and applied to the final general development plan approval. And before I hand the presentation off to Ben Schoenberger, to represent the Clackamas Community College side, I thought I'd talk about the next steps. So the planning commission from this point may approve with the recommended and revised conditions presented here by staff, may approve with conditions and findings revised by the planning commission, may deny with revised findings, and provide further direction to staff, or the planning commission may continue the matter and keep the public record open through to the next hearing. And with that, I can defer to the next phase of presentation.
Great, thank you, Jude. Okay, so I am assuming that Clackamas Community has a presentation? Come on up. Thank you for, for being here this evening. We really appreciate it.
Commissioners, thank you. Push my button and so you can hear what I'm saying. Ben Schoenberger from Winterbrook Planning. I'm a land use planner and hired by the college to guide them through this process. I'll let Tim introduce himself when, well, I want you to introduce yourself now.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Tim Cook. I'm president of Clackamas Community College. Really nice to hear that several of you have been on our campus. Commissioner Stoll, open invitation anytime you like, so.
Great. All right. Well, I won't belabor the point because Jude did a fine job of introducing the master plan, but I just did want to give some general background. Am I going to have these slides on the screen? Okay, that's fine. But just to say. But just to say as a lead, this has been a long process and we're pleased to be here, but that the crux of what, as you know, a general development plan is, is sort of a framework. It's an outline. It's a look ahead, 20 years of development at the campus. And the specific projects we have sort of outlined because we have a general idea of what that 20-year development package is. But a lot of what this is, is what's the process by which we're going to do something in the future? Not that we're going to do something immediately. This is kind of a plan in the most kind of general sense because it includes the word general right there in the title. And you'll have another bite at this apple in that individual detailed development plans will come maybe not before you specifically unless they also include adjustments, but will come before the city with the real touch and feel of how tall is the building going to be and what are the materials that are going to be used? And how will the main entrances be oriented towards Douglas Loop or towards? That will all come in a later phase of this. But what we need to do on a, I guess now, 17-year cycle is have a general discussion of what are the impacts of this development? And how will overall traffic flows come in and out? And where will entrances to the campus be? And that sort of thing. So that's, that's what we've tried to develop in this application package. And that's what we're doing here tonight. So that's okay. You have a paper version of this slide. It's a fairly straightforward slideshow. So I'll just do the paper and we can walk through it because there's only five or six slides. So the existing conditions plan, which was shown, I just wanted to point to the sort of key elements of our, of our drawing packet. And it just shows how the college is oriented, which I'm sure you know. There's a campus core where the cluster of most buildings are. Main entrances both on 213 and on Beaver Creek. And since the last master plan, now an entrance on Myers Road. That's a distinction between the last plan. Just to more specifically identify the Condition Nine area that we cleaned up last week. It's that area that sticks furthest east and has frontage on Beaver Creek. That was a nine-acre piece? A nine or 10-acre piece that was acquired by the college a few years ago under the BPA easements that is just south of that Beaver Creek cluster of buildings. The area that the college has since acquired much more recently is south of that. And so that's not in this master, because it's so recent and there aren't immediate plans to do development on that piece in the phase of this master plan, then that, we're just going to leave that out of the master plan for now. There is a process by which we could expand the master plan boundary through a type three process, but it was just too late in the game for us to worry about in this development application. So, so that's, that's what the existing conditions are. So in the following slide, which is our Figure Two Priority Modernization and Adaptation Sites, this is sort of the key site plan for the whole project. It's the same as our existing conditions plan, but with some things dressed over the top of it. And it shows in those yellowy-orange areas where development is going to happen over the 20-year cycle of this plan. So the easternmost edge of it is where the Natural Resource Center of Excellence, which is probably the first thing that's going to come down the pike, as is, and that is going to be in that area marked Vocational Training. There'll be a new facility there for, and then Tim can talk about this in a little more detail, for horticulture, wildland fire, those issues that we've also listed in our plan documents. There'll be new facilities and grounds activity in the area marked Campus Services. There'll be new athletics facilities in the area, obviously marked athletics. And then much further out, for which there is actually no bond money yet in the campus core, the Wachino Welcome Center Phase Two. So we can talk about that in a second. So that's just the overall view of what activity is going to happen in what parts of the campus. So that's reflected in our master plan project list, which is the next slide. This just sort of outlines both what is happening and where it's happening. That first row, existing building renovations, interior improvements and building renovations don't actually require land use approval in this way. So those could probably occur even without a master plan, but they're bond-funded and master plan projects here nonetheless. The big project that is coming soon is the Natural Resources Center for Excellence. That might likely be the first DDP that the city sees come in the door in the Beaver Creek Cluster or the vocational area. Then athletics improvements, as I mentioned, upgrades to that area of the campus, campus services improvements, grounds building, storage area, sort of a small area there. One thing that a lot of people are really excited about is pathways and plazas. So completing the Douglas Loop walking trail to make that a continuous loop all around the campus, which includes some of these ADA upgrades. And then again, the further out project on the footprint of Bill Broad Community Center is the Phase Two of the Wachino Welcome Center, which is about another 50,000 square feet of development. So all that to say, on the next slide, I pulled this from CCC's website, is there's money to do a lot of this. And that's very exciting. And both for those of us who make plans that sometimes happen and sometimes don't, that this one really seems to be happening. So thank you to all the community for supporting the college and making this an impending reality. So the last slide I just want to point to because one of the key approval criteria for the general development plan is to mitigate anticipated impacts of master plan development. And I took some thinking about this because this is a way to reflect that impacts are directly related to people and people either driving to the site or turning on the water or flushing a toilet or having, you know, stormwater runoff from additional impervious area that needs to be managed. But in the landscape of the previous master plan and that sort of steady increase of enrollment and headcount and buildings and parking spaces and demands on public infrastructure, it hasn't turned out that way. Because as you all know, we had a pretty momentous world-changing event occur in 2020. And that's reflected in this graph. So the bars are enrollment, which is like number of courses that people are taking. So one student takes four courses. That counts as four. And the gray line and the gray line dotted going off to the right is headcount. So that one student taking four courses is still just one student. So slightly different ways to measure, you know, people, students on campus. But then those things would then be reflected in vehicle trips or toilet flushes or, you know, those other kinds of things that are really, get to that criteria of anticipated impacts for master plan development. And as you can see, because of the precipitous drop due to the pandemic, there's been a bounce back and that's exciting. But that drop also created a lot more opportunity for virtual learning. And that might still be a student. But this, this graph also is only reflective of in-person and hybrid students. So we've kind of excised, if a student doesn't ever come to campus, then they don't really create an impact. And that's not really something that we have to concern ourselves with from a land use perspective. But that even going out towards the end of this master plan horizon will still be significantly lower than the actuals were prior to the pandemic. So that makes the assessment of this master plan a little easier because we're not really creating more traffic, more parking, more water demand, more stormwater management necessarily than was the case prior to the pandemic. So that's reflected in our application. And I think that's reflected in the recommendation for approval and the conditions of approval. And it's, it's still a good story because the college is thriving and the college has support from the community, as reflected in the last bond vote. And there's a lot of great stuff happening and that will continue to happen as a result of this framework and this master plan. So with that, I would like Tim Cook, the president of the college, to talk a little bit about what's going on on the campus.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Ben. So yes, the college has been here in Oregon City since 1966. So we're about ready to celebrate our 60th birthday next year, which we're pretty excited about. And as we did this, this planning document over the last few years in preparation for that bond, you know, really thinking about how higher education's changed and where it's headed is, is a challenge because it's changed, changed quite a bit. And it will continue to change over here over the next 20 years. So that comment about the drop that we had during the pandemic is, is an important one. But I would say equally as important is just how students now really learn. And the, the days of students sitting in a, you know, 40 lecture class or something like that are really, really shifted. And so the example I like to give is pre-pandemic, we had about 10% of our classes were some sort of online or hybrid. Of course, during the pandemic, that went to 100%. Now, today, it's closer to about 50% of our students take some sort of online or hybrid, hybrid courses. And that is due to a number of things. It's, you know, we, many of our students are single parents. They're, you know, they're trying to work. They're trying to raise their families. And being able to, to take their classes from, from home or at least part of their classes from home has become really important. And so that, that will, as technology gets better and as the learning environments get better, those impacts as far as, you know, who comes to campus will, will continue to look that way. That said, you know, this Center of Excellence is really about horticulture. It's really about wildland fire. And those are hard to teach fully online, as you may guess. So students will still continue to come for those as they may shift in some, some other areas. So that is a pretty exciting project. When we were out talking around the county about this bond, that project really, really pulled the best, really got the most interest from, from our community. And I'll just add, if you weren't aware, part of that is that the Oregon State University Extension Office, which is located here in Oregon City, is actually bringing in dollars and wants to, wants to move on into that building as well. So I think that's going to be pretty exciting for, for our campus and for the colleges, for the college too. So, you know, we, when we think about, and we're, we're very grateful for everyone who voted for that bond. It was, it was a close one, but we're really, really grateful for that passing. We think about what that allows us to really do. We're very proud of the fact that people use that walking path and that people use our campus a lot. I also run every weekend around that. And, and so it's nice to see so many people using, using the campus. The, the projects that we're proposing around the athletic fields, even around this Center of Excellence with the, you know, master gardens and the demonstration pieces, the rest, we, we fully anticipate we'll continue to bring people on and really be a showcase for our community here in Oregon City. So thank you. Thank you for the consideration.
So that's our presentation. Thanks again to Jude for working with us on both the review and the clarification of conditions. And we're available for any questions from the commission.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the commissioners? Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Looking through my papers. Okay, minor things. Just, just something I'm curious about. The loop trail looks like it's going to get ADA updates, you know, but there's a lot of other trails. And I'm hoping the other trails are going to, are going to stay and be retained and maintained and we're not getting rid of some trails and focusing just on the loop?
No, there, there's no specific plans in this master plan for removal of any trails. I mean, that's...
So if they're there and they're going to stay there? Because there's the trails around the Environmental Learning Center and those are nice.
I know, yeah, I know exactly what you're referring to. Yeah, the, the ELC trails, Environmental Learning Center trails. And then, you know, for now, even that property that was alluded to that we, you know, we purchased that we don't have immediate plans for, we're talking about adding some more trails. Some, some of those, those natural trails that people like and that, that are, you know, kind of through the woods there. So, but there's no plans to remove those existing.
Excellent. And then the only other thing I noticed, I noticed that when you put the, the ITC Center in, is that the Industrial Technology Center? The sewer line didn't get extended to it. So the eight-inch existing is, was enough? No, no need to update that line because that, that building seems to have no sewer at all. On the sanitary sewer plan, Figure Eight, the red line doesn't go to it.
I can't say I know the specifics of sewer connections to each building. We might have an expert in...
We do have our staff.
...that can speak to that. Can you just let Bob have a...
This is our dean of facilities, Ron Prince.
Hi, the Industrial Technology Center has a pumped station that we pump sewer into the sewer bane. So that, that's why it wasn't required to be upsized.
Okay, so it's, it's pumping towards the west into that eight-inch line? And where is it pumping to?
Yes, that's correct, to the, to the west. Yes, sir.
All right, and then the replacement of the other building, that's not going to have any capacity issues with replacing the, oh, shoot, I don't know the name of it.
The Broad Community Center, the Wachino Phase Two.
Yes, yes, yes. Is that building getting much taller? Higher demand?
We are not making plans for that now. That's a Phase Two project that we don't have and we don't have the funding or anything like that to do that now, so.
Okay, I don't know if that would need to be mentioned at this point or not. Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Laws, do you have a question? Okay, hearing none. We can move to the next part of the public hearing. Are there any neighborhood representatives here this evening? I don't have any speaker slips and so I'm assuming that there aren't any individuals who would like to testify either. So at that point, we can go ahead and deliberate. And do we have anything to discuss about this master plan? I think we're all good. I think the only statement that I would make is I would just really hope, and I know that this is an unanswerable question, but I would hope that you've included all of the things that you intend to do so that you don't have to come back here for a master plan revision.
I appreciate that.
Make it as wide open, as flexible as possible. Can I entertain a motion?
Yeah, with that, I'll make a motion to approve GLA.
I'm sorry, can you, just for sake of process, can you close the public hearing first and then?
Yeah, close the public hearing. Right, and now we can entertain a motion.
Okay, I was going to make a motion to approve GLA U24020 and MAS 2401 with recommended and revised conditions as provided.
Second.
Very good.
Second.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Minick?
Aye.
Commissioner Laws?
Aye.
Commissioner, our Vice Chair Dole?
Aye.
Chair Espy?
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communications, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And we're, yeah, we're really excited to see all that happen, absolutely.
Okay, communications. I believe that there is a meeting on April 28. Oh, it's a legislative amendment for, you're going to make a recommendation regarding the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So that went through a long process. It went to City Commission quite a while ago and, but it didn't ever get adopted into the comp plan. So that's kind of the next step to get it adopted into the comp plan. Once that happens, then the plan is for parks and planning staff, they'll bring back that zone change around the RV sites at Clackamas Park. So if you can recall that, I think that was maybe a summer or two ago.
Now, does that include a trails plan?
I don't think trails are in there, no. It's just, just parks.
Yeah, because that's always a little scary.
It shouldn't be scary. It's, it's just, yeah, just the facilities, so.
Okay.
So that's what's coming up. And this will, I guess the other thing I'll say, this will be my last meeting with you all. And so, you didn't see the email that you shared.
I knew, I knew that you were not long for this institution,